From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truckston Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Welcome to the afternoon session of the Kern County Board of Supervisors. On this, the 25th day of September 2018, the board will reconvene. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Gleason.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Maggert.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Mr., we have a report on actions taken in closed session. GK?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. There are no reportable actions from the closed session.
Thank you, sir. We're going to begin our afternoon looking at our consent agenda. Consent items are considered to be routine by staff and are generally voted on all at once. There will be an opportunity for the public to make comment or ask a question about items on consent, and if a member of the board wishes to pull an item, that can be done. So if you follow along with me, if you're looking at an agenda, they're at the back corners of the room if you'd like to pick them up. But you can follow along with me. Consent items begin on page two with items three and four, then on to page three, items five, six, eight, and nine. On page four, items 10 through 13, but I need to indicate that item number 10 is being pulled by staff for a separate consideration. So item 10 will not remain on the consent calendar. Item 10 is not on consent, but 11, 12, and 13 are. On page five, all the items 14 through 16. On page six, items 17 through 19 are on consent. Are there any members of the public that can come forward, sir? Any members of the public that would like to? Oh, I missed some? Oh, sorry. They're not highlighted this time, and I missed them. I'm sorry. So I'm just a second, Mr. Farr. On page six, items 17, 18, 19, and then 21, 22, and 23. On page seven, all the items 24 through 29. And on page eight, items 30 through 32. Those are all on consent. There's another page? There you go, 33 through 36. Well, I probably became thoroughly confused here, and I apologize if that's the case. Item number 10 is not on consent, and we're going to deal with that separately in a moment. So are there any members of the public that would like to ask a question about an item that is on consent? I think, Mr. Farr, you have a question, and Mr. Fox, I believe, has one. So would you like to go first, Mr. Farr? Good afternoon, sir. Could you give us your name for the record? I know you've been with us before, but...
Sure. My name is Clark Farr, Bakersfield resident. I'm -- you don't have to actually pull item 19. I have some comments with regards to item 19, which is identified as an agreement to submit a signed document to the -- with regards to federal regulation CFR or 44 CFR 6510. It's actually not an agreement, and it really only affects Supervisor Maggert's district. What it deals with is about a one-mile levee that begins at its upstream end. Ah, my brain's just going blank here. Doesn't matter. It's a one-mile levee that protects Oildale on the north side of the Kern River. To begin with, I have to note that when we deal with levees, the first state engineer for California was -- once said that there are only two types of levees, those that have failed and those that will fail. And this levee is no different. However, in this case, it has been identified in the past as protecting portions of Oildale, large portions of the southerly portion of Oildale. And now FEMA has finally gotten around to getting a certification on this particular levee. It was built, I believe, in the late '40s, early '50s, and may actually have been built prior to Lake Isabella. I don't know my history on that levee to that degree. What has happened is the city of Bakersfield has taken over the responsibilities from and has taken away and eliminated the necessity for the Kern River Maintenance District that had responsibility for maintaining this particular levee and other levees along the river. They now have the responsibility for maintenance of a levee that only protects unincorporated areas. They did this so that they would have unfettered control of the Kern River and all the benefits that come with that. Now they have a cost that comes with it as well, and that cost is that that levee has to now be engineer-certified to meet its responsibilities. I have several questions with regards to that that you can then send back to staff. It doesn't slow up the necessity to sign this document, which the city of Bakersfield needs to send off to FEMA in the next three days. I'm not looking to delay that process nor eliminate the opportunity to get the -- what is it referred to here? A PAL, a provisionally accredited levee that would then hold for the next two years. That's all fine. Don't want to stop that. But my questions are, did the county public works apply due diligence and determination that the levee meets the criteria set for 44 CFR 6510 Part B, which is the design criteria? What they're having the -- your CAO sign is to the best of his knowledge. Now, "the best of his knowledge" is a very wonderful term. It is very weasely, and it allows for credible deniability in the case that somebody wants to come back and say, "You lied," which he wouldn't be unless, of course, you use the due diligence that any government agency should do. So the letter has been sent to -- or will be signed by the CAO. It's a form letter that gets attached to the city's application. Within that design criteria, there are certain responsibilities. First is freeboard. That requires that the water surface of the river be a minimum of three feet, four feet, within 100 feet of the North Chester Bridge. From my recollection, it doesn't have anywhere close to that, maybe, maybe one or two foot of freeboard. It's never been tested, so it's really not necessary to discuss, well, it survived this event or that event. It's never been tested because Lake Isabella does exist, but Lake Isabella, as you've probably heard, has some design problems and could very easily have to go to their design discharge, emergency design discharge, which is 10,200 CFS, to be able to draw down the lake so that it does not cause a massive failure of the lake and the dam and the lake then visit Bakersfield in a rather disturbing fashion. In addition to that, the Corps of Engineers did a study of the watershed that goes from the lake down to the canyon mouth and determined that the flow would be about 15,000 cubic feet per second. Now, that would be more of a surge, come and go, less of a problem. The 10,200 is a real problem because it could sustain for multiple days and could destroy levees just because of the fact it gets it wet. Doesn't necessarily have freeboard, may not have freeboard at all. That may be a problem, especially when you consider that when the original study was done, the river itself was at a different geometry. It was at a certain level. And since then, it's A-graded, which meant it went up. It's D-graded, it's A-graded, it's D-graded. You don't know where that level is, and it may be that the river itself has much less capacity today than when it was first built. Second issue is closures. There's no closures. There's no openings that go into that across that levee, so that one isn't really a problem. Embankment protection, major issue on that levee. At best, the embankment has rubble dumped sporadically along its face. Rubble is not bank protection. Riprap can be, but rubble is just odd-sized rock that's just dropped there to cause problems for those who have to actually deal with it during a flood. It's not embankment protected, or the embankment is not protected. I believe the levee is built directly upon pre-existing river overbank, which is the way things were done back in the '40s and '50s. And every levee in California that was built that way has been decertified. All those along the San Joaquin River, the Sacramento River in the Sacramento area have all been decertified because they do not have a foundation underneath them. As a point of interest, if you go 100 yards, 110 yards upstream of Hart Street along that levee, you'll find a swamp on the north side of the levee. That swamp is there because water is infiltrating under the levee. That shouldn't be occurring. That means there's no foundation underneath that levee, which means the levee's going to be decertified. Embankment, foundation instability. The levee's built upon river sand, and as such, if there's water in that levee and an earthquake happens, there is a high probability of liquefaction and the levee just disappearing, just not there anymore. That's a problem, and thus it needs to be designed accordingly, and I doubt it ever The settlement issues, it's been there. It's probably not subject to settlement, but there is a need for an engineering analysis. And as far as interior drainage, the county does have drainage facilities on the upstream side, the Hart Street Drain and pump stations. The questions that I have deal with that -- deal with the county's and/or the city's ability and/or want to deal with anything. I mean, will Tandyland perform the studies necessary without county participation? When it's necessary to have that the flood study done to show where the water surface is, when it's necessary to have the geotechnical studies done without the county's part on a levee that only protects unincorporated, will the city do that without county participation? And when will those things happen? As you all know, when it comes to Tandyland Enterprises, the only thing, the only time they ever give to the county is when they put a $1 stamp on a bill that they send you, okay? They don't do anything for free when it comes to the unincorporated. They won't hear either. They might prove me wrong. That'd be a wonderful thing. I enjoy being proven wrong. Unfortunately, it doesn't happen often enough, or at least that I recognize often. Remember, they have already discussed the fact that they are the Kern River Levee District. They have done some maintenance, but it hasn't been anything to take care of the problem. Will they accept the costs that come with that ownership of the levee? Time will tell. But remember, too, that that area north of the river gets its mapping changed in two years, two years and three days from today. The mapping will change, and that will be disastrous for those, the people who don't have high incomes. That's the low-income, lowest-income area in Oildale. The main question is, when the levee is found to be deficient, who will bring it into compliance? If the levee isn't any good, who's going to pay to make it work? Is that going to be the county? Is that going to be the city? Is that going to be some joint powers? Now's the time to start finding that out because you only have two years to make the repairs before the people and the residents of Oildale get nailed with very expensive insurance. Will Tandyland wait until the last minute to perform the studies required? From what I can tell, they waited till the last minute to send the request for this letter to be signed. I mean, you're getting it three days before it's got to be to FEMA. That, you know, meant they probably only sent it over two to three weeks ago, and they probably had it for two months. So, you know, is the city, as is their method of operation, going to wait until the last second to do anything, leaving you no time whatsoever to protect the people within your district? Will Tandyland wait until the last minute, leaving county residents? We're really talking about the area south of Beardsley when you are on the west side of Chester and south of McCord, when you're on the east side of North Chester. I looked at Google Earth before I came here, and it showed what I -- or reminded me of what I already knew, and that was at the south end of Hart Street, that area is two feet perched, which means it is two feet below the bed of the river, which means the homes that are built there, that are built pretty much on grade, are two feet below the bed of the river. The river is probably at flood stage somewhere around six foot deep, which means those homeowners in that area will be paying for insurance of nine feet of water, which means they will not be able to afford it, period. It will cost an, well, an arm, a leg, first two male children and a grandchild to be announced later. It is not in their best interest. In short, will anything be done to bring the levee protecting Oildale into compliance before it's too late? And beyond the FEMA certification, assuming that the city's able to lie to FEMA about this levee and FEMA buys it, there still is an underlying concern that the levee may very well fail when it is tasked upon to operate, which means residents within Supervisory District Three will take eight foot of water through their windows, the tops of their doors, and through their homes. If that is not a reason to have the county investigate separate from the city, I don't know what else is, but I would recommend that this be placed in a high priority position as soon as possible for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farr. In a second, I'll have Mr. Pope give a response. Mr. Fox?
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. I'm Dennis Fox, and I'm here on item 2930, which has to do with motorcycles. I'll give you a quick background. This is FYI. Several years ago, the Bureau of Land Management operated a motorcycle area up in San Bonito County, and it was a nice place to ride. It was no trees and brush to get in your way. It was all nice white soil. Soil was called asbestos. So they got these little kids riding around on that. They put little signs. Do you get rid of it? Well, finally, the EPA nailed them, and they closed it down. Well, the motorcycles had no place to go, but also the BLM and their wisdom at the Sierra Club came over from the coast and over at Carissa Plains took the barbed wire fences down so it would be more natural. And there was a problem there. What happened? All the motorcycles decided that was the place to go. And of course, that was the place the BLM says, "We got to get rid of the cows because cows galloping caused valley fever." So the BLM got the county of Kern this board to back their proposal to put motorcycles over behind Taft and Maricopa, which is on their own maps rife with valley fever. So I think it's just something to remember when you get involved in that. I don't think it's too much of a risk issue with the sheriffs driving over there. I see no reason for them to give our deputies a good case of valley fever. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Any of the members of the public have a question about an item on consent? Before we vote on the consent calendar, Mr. Pope, could you please give us a response to Mr. Farr's question about whether or not we have applied due diligence in the determination that the levee meets the criteria set forth in this section that he quotes? And if it is ever found to be deficient, who will bring it into compliance?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask Mr. Fenton to describe what the program is and exactly what we're proposing here.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Fenton.
If we could have the overhead on this, we show the location.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the item before you today, I'll just kind of paraphrase. I appreciate Mr. Farr's comments. The two levees along the north and south side of the Kern River from Manor Street to the Callaway Weir, that does provide flood protection. Those levees are owned by the city. Today, I've asked your board to authorize Mr. Alsop to sign, it's really a letter of acknowledgement, more so than an agreement, just acknowledging that we're aware of this change, that the city is going to be working on this, but it does impact the county since there are county residents that are protected by those levees owned by the city. The items that Mr. Farr brought up as far as freeboard, embankment protection, foundation, stability, settlement, et cetera, that's why we have two years, or the city has two years, to verify that it meets the requirements in the federal regs to certify that. It doesn't happen overnight. That's why they're allowing, I think, September 28th of 2020 to provide that documentation. But today's item is just acknowledging that we're aware that that's in the works and we're an impacted community, and of course, we'll be working closely with the city and monitoring progress to make sure everything comes out okay. To my knowledge, I have no reason to think that it does not comply. Mr. Farr seems to have a different opinion, but that's what these studies will identify.
And will we have an opportunity to confirm that the city will provide maintenance of that in the event that it...
We will be communicating with the city to find out the details, how the study is going, if there's any issues and concerns, and get out in front of it the best we can.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fenton. Okay. The public's had an opportunity to ask about items on consent. Item number 10 is not on consent. Is there a motion then from the board to approve the consent calendar as it's been modified?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. Four ayes, one absence. Supervisor Perez.
Thank you. We're going to hear public presentations at the end of this afternoon's session. So next, we go to item number two, which is an opportunity for board members to make a reporter announcement. Colleagues, do you have any thing you'd like to say this afternoon before we proceed? Okay, thank you. I'm going to use the chairman's discretion because item number seven is going to take a little while. We're going to proceed with item number 10, the item that was pulled from consent, because I think it's a relatively quick matter, and then those that are here for that can go on about their business. So Ms. Oviet, let's start with item number 10 then, which is a public hearing for a proposed amendment to the county of Kern fiscal year 2018-19 Annual Action Plan for Community Development Programs. Ms. Oviet?
Good afternoon, Chairman Maggert, members of the board. This is a community development, economic development project. So we do receive money from the federal government through our Housing and Urban Development, and my department has a division that manages this. There is a requirement of your board to do economic development, and there has been approximately $400,000 that was set aside over the past few years for these projects. And Teresa Hitchcock and her team has been working diligently to find a project that would bring together their community partners that would satisfy the requirements of the federal program. And some of the requirements are, is that they have to produce jobs or they have to maintain jobs for our certain categories of people. These are the homeless, veterans, low-income, disabled. And I am very pleased today to bring forward to you, the first installment of this is a commitment of $220,000 along with other commitments that Ms. Hitchcock can more accurately describe, and she does have a presentation and some of the partners here today on this project, which is called Recycling Lives.
Good afternoon, Ms. Hitchcock.
Good afternoon, Chairman Maggert.
Good afternoon, Chairman Maggert, members of the board. And first of all, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that this, this program is actually the vision of Saul Moretti. Saul is in the audience today.
Hi, Saul. Good to see you.
So I wanted to make sure that I acknowledged that Saul actually came to me with this project probably about 18 months ago, and at that time, he had started a nonprofit in order to have this program move forward, and he approached us about taking over in order to, to grow the program further. So Recycling Lives, the idea behind Recycling Lives is to provide intensive training opportunities for some of the hardest-to-employ folks in our community, including those who are homeless or reentering society after incarceration. So this program is not unique. It has actually been done before. Saul was involved with the program in Albuquerque that did similar activities, and there's also a program in Hawaii. One of my employees had actually approached me about doing this program here in Kern County based on a similar program that he saw while he was vacationing in Hawaii, and little did he know that Saul had already approached us, so everything seemed to come together. So a tremendous amount of money is being spent on training, counseling, legal assistance, housing assistance, mental health, all with the aim of equipping our homeless population and recently incarcerated to be successful. But after they are done with their counseling and assistance and aid, they still lack one essential item to stay out of jail, off the street, or in housing, and that's a job. They often, more often, lack the job skill and experience to get a job. Recycling Lives is that solution. Recycling Lives will offer paid job skills training in order to help these folks move forward with their lives. Recycling Lives is also the solution to the glass recycling problem. Glass is problematic for recyclers, even though the state does give CRV value for them. Glass comes from cheap natural resources and thus has low value. It takes tremendous amounts of energy to heat it back up to be recycled, and it costs a fortune to transport this very heavy material to market. With Recycling Lives, we will change all of these dynamics. We create a product that adds value. We do not need to reheat it to melt it. We don't need to ship it to markets out of town. Here's the centerpiece of what we're trying to do. With a glass pulverizer, we will create a new product, a recycled glass landscape mulch and glass sand. Both have available markets, but the mulch is currently where the focus is. A 50-pound bag of glass mulch can sell for as much as $108. As we create a local market for this, we will generate revenues, and these revenues can be used to replicate the program in other areas of the county. In addition, we will pursue other sources of funding, including grants and private donations to support the program and other services to ensure our participants' success. Recycled glass is safe to touch, safe to walk on, and safe to drive on. This program is actually built on a new way of reversing poverty. According to Leela Jana in her book, Give Work, giving dignified, steady, fair-wage work is the most effective way to eradicate poverty. And for those of you who haven't seen her book, it's really an interesting take on how to reverse poverty in struggling areas. This program provides an opportunity to connect to our independent contractors, the folks we see around here with their shopping carts, legging their valuables and their recyclables with them. That's our recycling program. We're trying to recycle lives here. Glass is just the medium. The goal for outreach will be to feed them, know them by name, talk to them, get them coming in to bring us glass that they've collected for cash, and it'll be easy for, easier for us to collect glass that way as well. So I want to talk a little bit about the actual program, and I have with me today Jody Luffler and Mark Wyatt. Do any come up? With Bakersfield Adult School, as well as Bill Rector with West Tech. These are the folks who'll actually be providing the job training and the hands-on training in this program. So this program's built on partnership and collaboration with a multitude of training partners and other agencies. And there are also a ton of job opportunities that this program will train for. For instance, as we collect glass from restaurants and other suppliers, we'll set up routes, which creates jobs for drivers and helpers, and there's also jobs as we set up the pulverizer, feeding the conveyor, running the equipment, moving the finished product, delivering the product to buyers, to landscapers, to people's yards, and selling the product. There are jobs in the office, teaching administrative skills and supervisory skills. What we don't make enough of ourselves, like that gorgeous blue glass, we will buy wholesale and sell retail. More jobs. Our contracts in the community take it a step further, teaching truck-driving skills, recycling center skills, landscaping skills, and who knows what else? More jobs, landscaping, landscape design, landscape application, landscape jobs, sales jobs, marketing jobs. In addition to all of the other benefits already mentioned, glass landscape mulch saves water without compromising beauty. With the droughts that recently passed, we all know we now live in a desert, that water is scarce, and that we need to use less water on our lawns and landscapes. Recycled glass landscape mulch needs no water and doesn't need maintenance either, and it's beautiful. Because glass is translucent, we can do things with glass that we can't do with anything else. I can't wait to see what kind of landscapes are created in this community by our homeless workers, by the businesses, and by designers. So in summary, our goal with this program is to take a waste item, glass, and turn it into jobs, generate income for disadvantaged communities, save water, create beauty, recycle, put the homeless people in homes, and help parolees stay out of jail. And with all of that, we hope to save the community law enforcement resources, HUD resources, and beautify the community all at the same time. We, as a collaborative partnership, will succeed. We will build this. They will come, and from there, you just have to imagine, but it starts here, now, and with us. And with that, I'd like to ask Mark to say a few words, because he's been my partner in crime on some other training programs as well.
Hi, Mark.
Good afternoon. Yeah, thank you so much, Teresa. We're, I'm the principal of Bakersfield Adult School, Mark Wyatt, and we do work with the county on some other projects where we provide the jail education at Laredo, and we also started Cafe 1600 at the Employers Training Resource. And both of these programs have been very successful, or very successful, and we're very excited about working with Teresa on this next project. There's a lot of challenges to the project, but it's definitely a challenge worth the effort, and the people that we will be serving are those that are in most in need. It's also very exciting to work with Bill Rector at West Tech. This is really the first time we've had kind of multiple partners. It's usually been us and the county, or us and a certain county entity. So we're very excited about the partnership, and like I said, we're looking forward to the challenges, and we think we're going to improve lives in Kern County.
So in my final thank you goes to Lorelei Oviet, who's always the champion for trying to make these things happen, and thank you, Lorelei, for when we come in with our crazy idea, figuring out how we can make this work. We really appreciate it. And with that, we're available to answer any questions that you might have about the program.
I am really excited about this program. I heard about it a few months ago. It, it is a winner on so many sides. It's providing jobs, it's providing transition for people that have been the very hardest to place. It's a great brainchild. It's just all the right pieces come together at the same time, so congratulations. I can't wait to see it be successful, and I'm, I'm just delighted that it's happening here in Kern County. Would anybody else like to say anything? Supervisor Couch.
I just want to congratulate you on getting this program off the ground, but I also want to say that Sal is the district director in the fourth district, so I'm proud to have him in our office now.
Good job, Sal.
Great, great luck, or best of luck with this. Thank you.
Anybody else have a comment? Well, let's hear from the public. Anybody in the public want to tell us anything about your, your views on this program? The recommended action is to, we've had a hearing, the recommended action is to receive comment, close the hearing, and approve the creation of the project.
So moved. Second.
Excellent. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. Four eyes, one absence. Supervisor Perez.
Very good. Thank you. Congratulations. Appreciate your willingness to make a difference in our community. Let's go now to number seven on our agenda. That is on page three, and it is a report on the cannabis initiatives, measures J and K on our November 2018 general election. Ms. Oviet, are you going to give us this report?
Thank you, Chairman Maggert, members of the board. This matter is completion of your request on July 24th, 2018, for a summary report on the details and potential impacts of the November 6, 2018 ballot measures on cannabis activities, which are now called Measure J and Measure K. This summary report has been provided to your board with this item and posted to our Planning and Natural Resources website. As noted in the cover page, this is not an endorsement of either initiative by any county department or by your board, and no position is being requested of your board on either of the initiatives today. I would like to point out some errata, corrections that I need to make to the report. They have been made to the report that's been posted online. First, on page one, the date is not November 76, 2018, but November 6. And on Measure K, on page two, the temporary lawful retail, which we're going to go over in detail on both these measures, is medicinal only, and the retail, it should say medicinal and adult use. So these errors will be corrected and the report reposted online. The report includes the official petition language, but not the summary that will be on the ballot. The public is directed to their sample ballots when they receive them in the mail for official language. The report goes into detail on the structure and organization of both these measures. This is a general look today at the differences, clarification of some misinformation that has been provided by media coverage, and discussion of fiscal issues. So in a general way, both initiatives are an amendment of Title 19, which is the Kern County zoning ordinance. Title 19 is managed and interpreted by the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department, with myself, the planning director, having your delegated authority for interpretation. If either one passes with 50% plus one vote, the current Section 19 section that bans medicinal and adult-use cannabis activities and regulates the temp lawful cannabis retail will be removed from the ordinance and no longer enforced. The, these two initiatives will be voted on by people in the unincorporated community. So if you live in an unincorporated part of Kern County, you will see this on your ballot. If you live in an incorporated city, you will not see these two initiatives on your ballot. You may see other initiatives on your ballot if you live in the city of Bakersfield. Both initiatives specifically do not allow the total banning of cannabis activities. However, both include a variety of limitations on cannabis activities. So once this is passed by the voters, it is binding, and it is specifically states that it can only be amended by another vote of the people. However, there are portions of the initiatives that do allow your board to bring forward a variety of ordinances. So there are some places in the ordinances that they have delegated back to your board to decide if you want to make some changes. Measure J is the Medicinal Cannabis Initiative by Ms. Epps, Mr. Jarvis, and Mr. Ganong, and Measure K is the Kern Regulation and Taxation of Cannabis Act of 2018 by Mr. Islandberg and Mr. Godinas. Measure J is medicinal cannabis only, and Measure K is medicinal and adult-use cannabis. So I want to do this in categories so that we can contrast some of the similarities and differences. So first, retail dispensaries. So Measure J is medicinal only, and if you are a dispensary that is a current lawful temp category, and you are in that category on November 6, 2018, 1,000 feet from a school, a park, or youth center, then if Measure J passes, the planning department would be required to issue a permit with no public hearing. Development standards such as parking, lighting, signage, and traffic requirements can be imposed, but no requirements beyond those already existing in the ordinance, and they would be required to get a building permit and a state license. There are an estimated 30 countywide with clusters that already exist in Oildale and Rosamond, and they would be required to be permitted. The Measure J states that beyond those, new revert to the state requirements of 600 feet from schools, parks, and youth centers, and your board could require a conditional use permit, and you could also adopt density limitations, such as limiting the number of these new CUPs in communities. Measure J does not allow mobile delivery. Measure K, which is retail dispensaries for medicinal and adult use, says that lawful temporary medicinal cannabis have two years in the same location to attempt to obtain a conditional use permit. All retail are required to get a conditional use permit under Measure K, and they are limited to 35 countywide. There is misinformation that they, that retail is limited to the two commercial cannabis areas, which are mapped, and we're going to talk about. That is not, that has been reported inaccurately by the media. The 35 retail in Measure K are countywide, but they require a conditional use permit. They have to be 1,000 feet from a school, a park, a large family daycare, a youth center. There are additional standards in Measure K that go beyond the state regulations and beyond the normal development standards, and they do allow mobile delivery. They cannot be located on properties that have not been vacant for at least a year. So those are the two contrasting on the retail portion of Measure J and K. Cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, and testing, we're just going to put those all in one category. In Measure J, it's medicinal only. It's allowed outdoors and indoors in all agricultural, industrial, and commercial, with the exception of C1, which is neighborhood commercial. No public hearing, no specific standards past state licensing and current development standards. The initiative uses the definitions, type 1A, type 2 licenses, with no descriptions. So in this report, I have provided a Table A that provides you a description of what those types of licenses are, and I've categorized them by zone districts. So on Table A, you can look to see what's allowed in agricultural and what's allowed in these various commercial. As a reminder, the only commercial district where nothing is allowed is the C1 neighborhood commercial. The exception to public hearings is cultivation proposed within one mile of an existing farming operation. We can require a conditional use permit, but the processing fees are waived. The amount that all this would produce cannot actually be calculated, but it certainly could be beyond the 2 million square feet and the 150 acres of outdoor analyzed in the environmental impact report. I would note that these activities of allowing outdoor and indoor in agricultural also includes the limited agricultural A1 district, which would allow unlimited outdoor and indoor. That district is mostly used by small lot rural communities on two-and-a-half-acre lots for residential use throughout the county. So there could be extensive outdoor and greenhouse cultivation with only a permit and no public hearing in these areas where these two-and-a-half-acre residential clusters are. Measure K is medicinal and adult use, is permitted with only a site plan with development standards that are detailed and go beyond state law, building permits, and state license, but only in two commercial cannabis areas, both in the valley. So I'd like to show you a map of these two areas and go over the some statistics which are provided in the report. So this first area is at I-5 Tracy Avenue and Sullivan Road. There's about 50 parcels here. It's 1,025, a little bit over that acres. And it is broken down through A, A1, C2PD, CHPD, which is both commercial, and then an industrial M2. There is a mobile home park designation of 26 acres, which was not listed in the initiative. Therefore, on those 26 acres, cannabis would not be permitted. But any cultivation, indoor or outdoor, and any testing, distribution, or transportation would be required to go into this area or the second area I'm going to show you, if they just want to go in without a public hearing and just with the development standards. The second area, the second, second area is northeast corner of Old River Road and Copus Road. There's 38 parcels. It's 3,835 acres. It is primarily zoned A. There's about two acres of commercial zoning, but the whole thing is zoned agriculture. If someone does not want to If someone does not want to go into this area, and they still want to cultivate, distribute, or test, the initiative provides that they could request a conditional use permit. A conditional use permit is discretionary. It requires a public hearing, and it could be either approved, denied, or conditioned. As noted, the existing temporary lawful retail, which are under this current ordinance for medicinal only, would be allowed to operate with a state license and a county land use permit for 2 years while seeking a conditional use permit, and there are approximately 30 of those. The new medicinal or adult-use retail would require a conditional use permit and a state license. The setback would be larger than the state requirement. It would be 1,000 feet from school, park, large family daycare, youth center. And that 1,000 feet and other requirements would be a requirement if they went into this commercial cannabis area. The amount that this would generate in distribution, manufacturing, and growing cannot be calculated, but limitations, as you saw, on the number of acres definitely go beyond the 2 million square feet and the 150 acres of outdoor. If all of Area 2, which is zoned A, had outdoor and indoor, it would be over 3,000 acres of cannabis cultivation. And while both measures include new taxes and fees, they are different in how they are imposed and the amounts. Measure J defers to your board and provides that your board could, through a public hearing process, adopt up to a 7.5% business tax, but only on the adjusted gross income from cannabis activities. And as the gross income revenue will be adjusted down through deductions, and the number of locations is unknown, the amount collected cannot be estimated. Measure J also limits your board that you cannot put special fees on cannabis activities that exceed those set by the state. However, ordinance fees that apply to other businesses and normal cost recovery for staff time can be applied. And the exception, as I noted, is this conditional use permit for cultivation within a mile of an existing farming operation, the fees must be waived. I do note that 1 CUP, based on the controversial nature of this item, would cost the department from $6,000 to $20,000 or more. That's an impact to the general fund with other departments that review conditional use permits having unrecovered costs. Measure K includes fees and taxes that are much more specific, and they are included in the initiative, so if the initiative passes, they are automatically applied. There's a $250 business permit application fees, and then there is a variety of fees tied to square footage that range from 50 cents up to $2 a square foot annually. The board may raise the fees up to 10% of the original amount every 2 years, and retail operations pay 5% tax on gross receipts. The initiative allocates this money as follows. 65% of the fees go to the general fund, 20% goes to public safety, 15% goes to mitigate drug use, and any department that rejects the funding is redirected back to the general fund. Both measures would have impacts on public safety, the DA, probation, and a variety of departments. As noted in our Environmental Impact Report, I saw nothing in these 2 initiatives that would change our recommendation that a cannabis activity enforcement task force would be necessary. The estimation for that task force is 1.2 million to 2.7 million a year or more, and no identified staffing has been noted. So this would be new staffing. The total costs are unknown for public health and behavioral recovery services. However, Kern would become eligible for the new state cannabis funding, which I presented to your board, that's being collected on taxes and distributed by the state. Regarding personal use, both initiatives affirm state law, however, and they both allow outdoor cultivation for personal use in a locked enclosure that is not visible for public roadway. However, Measure J requires barbed wire, which is not currently allowed in residential zones, and deletes the locked enclosure for residents in the agricultural or limited agricultural zone. The other requirements that were adopted, such as restrictions on use in parks or distances from public libraries and parks, were not included in this initiative, and therefore they would not be overturned. Those are not in Title 19, and they were not mentioned, and therefore, those restrictions, which your board prudently placed on the use of cannabis in those locations, would remain. In conclusion, until the election results are certified, which is sometime in the middle of January, the Kern County ban ordinance remains in place. This department has provided this summary report, but I will not be explaining the initiatives any further than at this public hearing. I will not be presenting at any other forums, and I will not be making any final interpretations either publicly or privately of the meaning of the language in these initiatives. This completes my presentation. I know that the proponents of the initiatives are here, and so if there are questions I cannot answer, I'm sure they'd be happy to, and I am available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oviat. Colleagues, do you have any questions before we go to the public? Are there any members of the public this afternoon that would like to talk to us about the report on cannabis initiatives J and K that we just received? Good afternoon. Could you please give us your name for the record?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon to the board. My name's Phil Gonnong. Good afternoon, Laura Ly. How are you? Just lost my brains. Hang on a second. I'm the nominal author of J, and also Major O for the city. Vote yes on O. Sorry. And I wanted to comment on the description of these ordinances as, or at least as to J, providing unlimited dispensaries or unlimited activities. Last year I spoke to, where's my time home? Last year I spoke to Lori Ajax, who is the Director of the Bureau of Cannabis Control. I've had a couple of meetings with her, and discussed the problem that we had where BCC, Bureau of Cannabis Control, was issuing licenses throughout the state, but Kern County and Bakersfield did not have any ability to grant licenses or obtain licenses because the activities were prohibited in both jurisdictions. And I was concerned about that, and I told her, you know, we've got these initiatives, and if they pass, all the licenses are going to be gone. And what Ms. Ajax said was that they are, in essence, they're trying to ensure that there's not an overpopulation or density of licenses that are issued in any geographical area. They wanted to see that there was a fair distribution and that there was available access to the patient community for medicinal cannabis. So the notion that there's going to be thousands of dispensaries, and I think that's maybe the biggest concern that this board has, is not well-founded because the outside limit will be set by the Bureau of Cannabis Control, and they will not issue thousands of permits. We don't know how many they're going to issue, but they will regulate the number of permits that will be issued to the county. It's self-regulating. The other reason that J was written as it is without caps is because caps are, they create a form of monopoly. If you're one of the lucky winners of the cap, you know, of the permit, that means that you and 34 other shops are going to dictate the cost to the patient, and also the quality to the patient, and also the service that you give the patient. We believe that good conservative traditions, good Republican traditions, if I may borrow that, of free-market enterprise is a much better governing hand in allowing competition amongst the dispensaries to weed out those who can't run a business, those who can't comply with state regulations and will be banned by the state, versus those who can run a business and know how to run it well and deliver a low-cost, quality product with good service. Those are the businesses that are going to survive. We don't think we need government intervention to tell us what the caps are. The public will tell us what the caps are by driving those people who can't deliver out of business. The other issue that I had would, and I think Ms. Oviat covered that, under J, no commercial cannabis, medicinal cannabis activities, and J is just a medical cannabis bill. None of those activities are allowed in neighborhood commercial areas. We were very sensitive to neighborhoods, and we wanted to stay out of that. J does allow, excuse me, K does allow development of recreational cannabis in the C1 neighborhood areas, so. And I had a question. I understand Ms. Oviat's estimate as to the current, the expected cost of the Cannabis Activity Task Force. I assume that's a task force that would be created and implemented to police or monitor the state-regulated activity. I'm not sure. But I was just curious, do we have any idea what it currently costs the county of Kern for law enforcement directed towards cannabis cultivation and dispensaries and litigation of that in nature? I mean, it's one thing to say it's 1.7 to 2.5 for this task force, but that figure, I think, should be compared to what does it cost us today under the current ban to enforce the ban? And I would suspect that the costs are higher today to enforce the ban than they would be under this task force. And also to point out that the state of California, although it has no offices in Kern County, BCC has no office, the CDFAs has no office, they regulate cultivation, and the Department of Health Services, which will regulate consumables, they have no offices here for that purpose. But the point is, we don't allow that activity here. It's illegal here. So there's no reason for them to establish an office. If this, either of these pass, then the BCC will have a presence here. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Gonnong. Would you like to speak, ma'am? Good afternoon.
You too. My name's Linda Jarvis. I also am here for Measure J, and I will tell you something that has annoyed the heck out of me that has been mentioned numerous times about adjusted gross income. When it comes to medicinal dispensaries, the only thing that is allowed by the federal government, because I had one of these businesses, and I know how much money I had to pay out, and what they wanted me to pay out was for absolutely every employee. You're not allowed to deduct things with the federal government when it comes to cannabis businesses. So my employees, our workers' comp, every other liability insurance, we paid medical insurance to our employees. The location that we had, absolutely every business expense, from a pencil to a computer to everything else, is totally disallowed. The only thing that the federal government allows you to put on your taxes that are considered deductible is the actual little location where the product is being sold and the physical cost of your product. So all the other expenses that every business in this country is allowed to take, cannabis businesses or not. So our adjusted gross income, no matter whose business it is, if it's cannabis, it is going to be taxed at a very high rate, and the 7.5% that we're discussing here will be a lot of money to the county. That's all I got to say. If you have a question, I'm happy to answer it.
Thank you, ma'am. Someone else have a question?
Hi, how are you, Chairman?
Good afternoon.
This is Aton Wallace with 17 News. How are you, Ms. Oviat? Good to see you guys. Question, I'm sorry to do this up here. I want to make sure the media gets it right, and you mentioned there's a few things that have gotten wrong, so I do have a question. Are you able to go into one more time, what were the 2 places in land where we've been, or the media has not been reporting accurately, and what is the accurate information there? Again, I lost it, and I want to make sure we get that correctly, get that correct.
We'll answer your question for in a few minutes.
Oh, thank you very much.
Are there other comments? Good afternoon, Ms. Bedard.
Mary Bedard, register our voters. I just wanted to clarify something that's stated in the report. It states that these initiatives will be voted on by the voters of unincorporated Kern County, and they will be voted on by voters countywide.
So is it your position that the measures J and K will be on the ballot for all voters, whether they live in an unincorporated area of Kern County or they live in an incorporated city?
That's correct.
Ms. Oviat, that's a significant difference in your understanding. Can we flush that out a bit?
Chairman Maggott, I received that from county council. Our understanding is the City of Bakersfield's initiative is voted on by the city and the county initiatives, and so I got that from county council.
Okay, we were also, we were told initially by county council that it would be countywide.
GK, can you give us any clarification? That's a significant difference.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been in contact with Mr. Nations. I don't know if there's been a miscommunication, but Ms. Bedard's position is the correct one. The ballots of all residents will contain measures J and K. Only unincorporated voters will vote on the 1% sales tax, which is Measure I, and that's by virtue of the government code, because there's a provision that allows for that. But there's no such government code that restricts J and K, so that will be for all residents.
So if there is a resident of the City of Bakersfield, for example, would they vote on measures J and K, and I didn't catch what the, O is the ballot measure for the City of Bakersfield, they would have an opportunity to vote on all 3 of those?
That's my understanding, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Well, that's significant. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bedard. Yes, sir, do you have a comment, sir?
All right. My name's Timothy Blakely, B-L-A-K-E-L-E-Y, with the Kern Medical Cannabis Association and with Diamond Collective out in Rosemont. A lot of times we don't talk about what the benefits of these measures are. A lot of times we get stuck talking about the negatives. You know, in the EIR, I believe the taxes that would be received by Kern County are nearly $40 million, $39 and some change, and the potential job growth brings in nearly 9,000 jobs. And this is just what the early numbers are, and it's not, you know, actual numbers. They can actually go quite larger than that. That includes the 7.5% tax that's included in Measure J, as well as, I believe, the money that will be collected from the state of California for removing the ban. Because as we all know right now, with the ban in place, we get nothing from the state of California, and we can really use that money here in Kern County as far as regulations are concerned. I believe that Measure J does a better job at regulating cannabis. It's medical only. It's easier to regulate medical cannabis because there are so many pre-made procedures in place because we've been doing medical since '96. So a lot of the industry establishments and where we need to be are already built in to medical. As far as K is concerned, I just don't think that recreational is appropriate right now, especially for people who are just barely touching bases on getting a hold of the medical side of it. And I think that all of you agree too, we're more about it for the patients than having a bunch of fun with it anyways. I don't like my medicine being put in the same category as like a party drink like a beer, you know? I don't like that. And so I would hope that you all would take a real close look at both of these measures and see how they benefit the county the most and our communities the most. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blakely.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chairman, board members. Gabriel Godenas, on behalf of Measure K, just a point of clarification I wanted to express. First, I want to say thank you to Laura Ly for giving the breakdown. She did an accurate and a good job breaking down what the similarities and differences are. So thank you. I just want to clarify, Measure K allows for 35 storefront collectives. Currently, I believe the county has 28 or 29 on the legal non-conforming list. So you're looking at an increase, slight increase there possibly. Mr. Gonnong was correct as far as how the state is going to regulate the density for those particular licenses. So that's another protection that we have. But a point of clarification, the C1 that's approved for the storefronts, which is a neighborhood commercial, we already have some of those in place already. So I want to make sure So I want to make sure that was clear. It's not going to be deemed that there would be an increase because these other ones would be subjected to a CUP process. Well, Measure J, they would not. So thank you for your time.
Mr. Godinez, could you answer a question for me? Is there, do you have an estimate of how much revenue you think Measure K would generate?
Measure, no, we do not. What we would go off of, we would go off the numbers essentially that were provided in the environmental impact report. As those were, the square footage was much less, so it would be, we would anticipate something to that effect, but nothing that I can give you with certainty.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other members of the public that would like to ask a question or make a comment about the report? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and return to the board. Ms. Oviat, could you answer the question that the KGET reporter had regarding this clarification about location?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Maggard, members of the board. Measure K has these two areas called commercial cannabis areas. In a number of news reports, the statement was made that dispensaries can only go into those commercial cannabis areas, leaving people under the impression that there would be no retail establishments anyplace but in those two areas. That is not accurate. The 35 conditional use permits countywide can go outside those areas, just have to have a public hearing to go into those, for those locations. That does not mean that there might not be dispensaries inside those commercial cannabis areas, but that was a number of news reports that made that inaccurate, and certainly that would have an impact on communities' determination of how this measure could affect them.
So what would be the activity that would be restricted to within these two designated areas?
Growing in greenhouses, growing outdoors, manufacturing, which is creating the oils, distribution, which is the large warehouses where you move it, and testing.
Very good, thank you. Does that answer your question, sir? Yes, you're welcome. Okay, colleagues, do you have any other questions or concerns? Yes. Supervisor Scrivener, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a question for county council. So, Mr. Colso, if the, if all the residents of the county, whether you're in an incorporated city or in the unincorporated county areas, will be voting on J and K, if one or, if one of those passes, I know it's one or the other, whichever gets the most votes, I believe is the way it works, if one passes, how does that impact the bans that are in place for the incorporated cities, other than the City of Bakersfield, which will have its own, its own measure on the ballot, and that one's O? So how does that, how does that impact the other incorporated cities in the county? If they don't have a measure that's on specifically for them, but they will be voting on J and I'm sure a lot of them will be wondering how that will impact them.
Thank you. Supervisor Scrivener through the chair, this is not a matter that I've looked at, and my understanding of how this is, how these ordinances are laid out is that the county ordinance may not have an impact. But I, again, this is not something that I've looked at, and I apologize for my office, the individual who is most conversant with this is Mr. Nations, and he's dealt with the planning department. I defer to Ms. Oviat if she has information, but this is not something that I have looked at.
Supervisor Scrivener through the chair, I appreciate Ms. Bedard and county council clarifying that, because we've gone back and forth. But these initiatives were specifically written to amend Title 19 of the Kern County zoning ordinance, and that ordinance does not apply to city property.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions by members of the board? Supervisor Scrivener, I'm sorry, Supervisor Gleason.
I just got to, I know we're frustrated by this, but I need to understand. So if I'm living in the City of Bakersfield, I'm going to place a vote on what's going to happen outside my jurisdiction but can't happen inside my jurisdiction. Is that correct?
That is correct, based on this direction from council and elections, that this would be on their ballot, along with Measure O, which does affect what happens in their city.
So I could vote against O and pro-J or pro-K?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Recommended action is to receive and file the report.
So moved.
Sir, a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask county council to give us some information specifically on the city question. So if you, if you live in Ridgecrest, for instance, or the City of Tehachapi, you'll be voting on J and K, but it will not impact you in the jurisdiction of your particular city. I, I'd like to get, I'd like to get some more information from council on that, please, and other than, in addition to voting to receive and file this report. Thank you.
We can provide that to Mr. Scrivener through the chair. We can provide that.
Thank you. Supervisor Couch, are you comfortable expanding your motion to include that language?
Sure.
I don't need that as part of the motion. I'm just saying, I'd like, I'd like to get some information from staff. Yes, I don't want to, I don't want to convolute this.
Don't muddy that.
Thank you.
Very good, okay. So we have a request for more information that, will that be forthcoming to us in a week or two?
I think it'll be forthcoming to you in a day or two, Mr. Chairman.
A day or two, okay. Ballots go out when, Ms. Bedard?
I have to check.
I think it's the week of the eighth, I believe, so. Okay, very good. We have a motion, I believe we have a second, do we not, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
That's to receive and file the report. Please cast your votes.
Can I ask you a question, please? So all we're, when we say receive and file, what does that mean?
Just noting for the record that we have received the report.
Okay.
It is not any form of affirmation or any comment as to the content or the nature of it.
Chairman Maggard, if I may, for Supervisor Gleason, on the cover of this report, which you have, is a large disclaimer. This report is not endorsed by the Board of Supervisors, there's no selection of the initiatives, there's no selection by my department, and no interpretation. So we did put a disclaimer on the report. Thank you. The motion is approved. Four eyes, one absent. Supervisor Perez.
Thank you very much. The last item for the afternoon is item number 20, which is a proposed resolution for the exchange of tax revenues related to the City of McFarland, Annexation Number 15 through LAFCO.
Mr. Chairman, members of the boards, recommended that your board adopt the attached resolution authorizing the auditor controller county clerk to process the necessary transactions in accordance with Agreement 535-2018 with the City of McFarland for the exchange of tax revenues. This annexation, you should know, meets the criteria of the master revenue exchange agreement between our county and the City of McFarland. That said, we would like to simply express our concerns regarding any action that we take that would expand city services and increase costs related to fire protection. To that end, we're greatly looking forward to working with the fire chief and the city to figure out a long-term, sustainable working relationship and contractual arrangement for fire services. I should say the city is also fully current with its, its payment under their discounted to your contract with our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alstap. Are there members of the public that would like to speak with regard to item number 20? Okay, I'll return to the board then. Board, what is your direction for staff?
I'll move the staff's recommendation.
Staff's recommendation is just to provide direction, so.
The direction is to send the letter to LAFCO. Adopt the resolution.
Chairman Maggard, Supervisor Couch, that's correct.
Very good. Adopt the resolution, which authorizes that to be done. Okay, we have.
I'll second that and congratulate Supervisor Couch for the good work.
Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. Four eyes, one absent. Supervisor Perez.
Madam Clerk, I believe that that concludes our items. Other than, we, an opportunity that we afford the public every time we meet to give us any comments they have on matters, not otherwise on our agenda. Are there any members of the public that would like to make comment to us this afternoon? Not seen anyone, I will close that item and entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Without objection, so ordered. We'll see you in two weeks, I believe, right, Madam Clerk? Thank you. Bye-bye.